I'd like to call to order the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly Work Session of Thursday, August 29, 2024, at 6:30 PM in the Assembly Chambers. First item is Citizens' Comments. This is, the local number is 907-486-3231. Toll-free number is 855-492-9202. Anybody wishing to come forward, please sign in and turn on the mic up here and, or call on those two phone numbers and we will get you before the assembly here. So open to Citizens' Comments at this time.
Hi, my name's Leanna Harrington, owner of Bean and Bloom Coffee House, here to voice my opinion on the unfortunate decision regarding Restaurant Eating Place License Number 2611. The Borough Clerk's Office did do their due diligence in providing necessary information that was ultimately swept aside by this assembly. To obtain and maintain one of these highly sought-after licenses, you must be in operation for 240 hours of the calendar year, and you must have a premise. This business was removed from 116 West Resnov Drive two years ago, leaving a false address on all applications that have been filled out. This business claimed zero income tax through the city while claiming income through the state to show operational status, and that does come directly from a state employee. It was falsely said in your meeting on August 1st that there are available licenses in the city limits. I would like to ask you, because in that same meeting you were told directly by the clerk, that there is a petition for our city to obtain more licenses beyond our cap of four. Did this not register to you that there is clearly a demand and we in fact do not have any more available? This person is sitting on not one but two of these licenses with no premise, no operation, and no legitimate plans for operation as they have slapped a hefty price tag on their permits. If our local governments had done their due diligence over the years, this said person would have one permit at best, as the second has not been in use for well over six years at minimum. It's worth, it's worth it to mention that the business license, licenses that these permits operate under through the state expired in both 2020 and 2023 with no renewal. By granting these permits, you're taking away opportunity for people actively running good-standing business, you're taking away revenue through taxes, and giving the community less resources for socialization. I'm highly disappointed about the city and the borough as I have actively tried to communicate all the above and then some. I've been told by Borough Assembly members, and I do quote on this one, that this is a small town and we bend the rules for our neighbors and friends, and don't necessarily have to abide by the rules, that I don't know what I'm talking about, and have been blatantly ignored. Now, I might not be your friend, I have been in business, or have not been in business for 40-plus years, but I am your neighbor and I'm actively serving this community with a legal business. It's not easy to foster a business here, and we look for more opportunities to grow and expand to stay afloat. This is very disheartening and quite frankly a slap in the face to hear what was said, and see someone get to keep not one but two permits with no premise, false income claims, and expired licenses. I do appreciate, I do appreciate this assembly, and this assembly alone, for bringing this topic back up for discussion in Kodiak. If anyone would like to further discuss this matter, I'm more than happy to support our good friend Mrs. Kim, and have a discussion with you over a beer or glass of wine at Peking or Second Floor Restaurants. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming forward. Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak or call in? Once again, the local number is 907-486-3231, and toll-free number 855-492-9202. Hearing and seeing none. Do we have one?
We're now answering a call from the queue.
Okay, hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to agenda items. The first is discuss ordinance amending various sections of the Kodiak Island Borough Code Title 17 zoning to include defined intent and development standards for accessory dwelling units. Is there a staff report, Amy, if any?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Assembly Members. The Kodiak Island Borough Planning and Zoning Commission began working on potential amendments related to ADUs starting at a work session in May of 2023. After many months of reviewing the existing regulations in light of accessory dwelling unit regulation guides from both AARP and Alaska Municipal League, the Commission held its first public hearing on amendments related to ADUs on February 21, 2024. The Commission held three public hearings on the amendments, making multiple revisions to the draft ordinance, and on June 18, 2024, they voted four to one to recommend approval of the ordinance to the Assembly. That's what you have in front of you tonight. Our Community Development Director, Chris French, is here to answer any questions that you might have about the process or the ordinance itself.
Chris, I'd like to have you give a presentation on it, please, for the Assembly.
Yes, thank you. Chris French, Community Development Director. Just one thing I will, will state to the Assembly tonight, you do have in your packet of information, a one-page document that I put together, hopefully that helps a little bit, that compares the current ordinance from the proposed ordinance that you have before you. I think it may be the last page in the packet for that particular agenda item. But I'll just briefly go over some of these amendments. As the Borough Manager stated, this has been going on, or the work on this has started back in May of 2023, actually before I became Community Development Director, which was in August of 2023. And some delays in that, primarily to wait on the AML's document, which came out in December of 2023, the Commission did wait to see what was recommended through AML regarding accessory dwelling units and what are some of the standards that they recommend keeping, or what are some of the issues that they feel are things that need to be addressed in existing ADU ordinances that exist throughout the state, as well as any new ordinances that are proposed throughout the state. I will say accessory dwelling units is a pretty popular, in this timeframe today, it's a very popular thing around the country. I can say probably in 2019, when the, the current Borough Ordinance was, was approved, it wasn't as big of an issue as it is today in relation to the housing crisis. And so you do see a lot of, of ADU ordinances throughout the country, some of them building on existing ordinances that existing ordinances, and trying to make them hopefully easier for people to get ADUs and go through the process. These particular changes that are before you hopefully do some of that. They do try to make the process easier to go through. One of the biggest changes in this is, is how the conditional use permit process is used. Currently, some zoning districts require a conditional use permit for detached accessory dwelling units, but not for attached accessory dwelling units. Some require, some zones require the conditional use permit period for any kind of accessory, accessory dwelling units. This proposal would change how we look at conditional use permits. It's very similar to what AML recommended and also what's in, I believe also in your packet was the AARP's document on accessory dwelling units. Instead of requiring conditional use permits upfront, what this particular change proposed before you would do, the major change in it, would be that if you meet the standards associated in the code, and some of those are new here in this particular ordinance, but if those standards are met, then someone can be administratively approved to have an accessory dwelling unit. But if you don't meet one or more of the standards, then you have the option to go through the conditional use permit process to get approved. In other words, you go through the public review process if you don't meet the standards. Now, you can choose to do that, you don't necessarily have to. Just because you don't meet it doesn't mean we're making you have to get a CUP, only if you want to continue on through the process. Some of the major changes in relation to that was, we did some refinements to the current definition that's very, that's much more in line with what you see in current research about ADUs around the country, basically what was recommended in the AML document as well as in the AARP documents, where it breaks out the types of ADUs, it states you're only allowed to have one ADU per lot, those kinds of things are in the definition. One of the reasons to do that is because it wouldn't be subject to a variance and things like that. It's part of the definition, it's not something that you can change through a variance process. The other aspects of this is that we talked about parking in this, some reductions in parking. I know there's been some discussion at the Commission level about having a lesser requirement in the city versus the borough, the reasoning behind the, at least the Commission's reasoning behind having a lesser requirement in the city is because of more on-street parking, where you really don't have that particular ability to have on-street parking in the borough. And so that was the reason why there's a different parking requirement in the city and the borough for ADUs. Does simplify the size restriction to just an 800-square-foot size. It does remove the requirement that the owner of the property must live, must live on the property. That was one requirement that was highly discussed throughout the review process by the Commission. It also adds the requirement that ADUs must be behind or to the side of the principal dwelling unit. This particular revision was put in place to address detached accessory dwelling units to try to address some of the potential concerns of compatibility and some of the concerns that we felt led to it being considered a CUP in the current ordinance. So that standard was added. We also added that the requirement that the property must meet the minimum lot size of the zoning district in which the property is located. In the city of Kodiak, there's quite a few properties that are zoned R1 but are at a lot size that are much lower than what the R1 minimum would be. Of course, these are lots that predate zoning code, and therefore those lots existed prior to zoning being in place. What we provided here is there was concerns about those small lots, whether they could actually, you know, fit an ADU on them without requiring them to be in setbacks and those kinds of things, and have the requirements for the parking met. And so that's why this provision was added, making sure that, hey, you have the, the minimum lot size of the zone that you're in, so you have sufficient space to construct an ADU, especially if it's a detached ADU. And we also removed the R2 requirement. Reason behind that, the R2 zone allows duplexes. It was felt that, you know, the current ordinance that we have doesn't allow an ADU when you already have two units anyway, and so the reason the recommendation to remove it is in there is just because it was felt, it was redundant, and that someone can just build a duplex with the current zoning. it was redundant and that someone can just build a duplex with the current zoning. And so the R2 was removed as part of that discussion. And if there's any other questions, I think I went through the, some of the details of that. As I said, the, the handout does, I think, a pretty decent job of explaining what the current ADU ordinance allows or requires and then what the proposal would require.
Scott.
How can we prevent them from becoming Airbnbs?
So we did have some discussion on that. I did talk to the commission that you could add a provision that they would not be used. We wouldn't be able to call them Airbnbs. The current zoning regulations basically call them vacation homes, so we would have to call it that. But you could add a provision into the ordinance that would prohibit them from being used as vacation homes. I will say in order to have a vacation home in the borough, you do have to get a zoning compliance permit. And so that would be a way we can, we can hopefully be able to track that if someone comes in, wants to do a vacation home and it's on an ADU, then we could deny it, for example, if we had that particular standard in place. I mentioned that to the commission. That was not something that they wanted to add, but it is something that you see in other ADU ordinances around the country.
My memory is the last time we dealt with this in 2019, I believe.
Yes.
There were a number of ADUs built in the borough and many of them have become Airbnbs. Have you heard that?
I have heard that. I, I mean, I don't have a lot of information to say that's the truth, but I have heard that that's the case.
Can we find that out, what the numbers are?
I can talk to assessing to see what we can do there, yes. I can say when we looked at the permit history on ADUs that have come through community development, there have been only six permits since 2019, three of those administratively, those that, that could be done administratively, and then three of those through the conditional use permit process.
Well, I was partially responsible for adding the conditional use question on it. And in part, what I wanted to do was inform the neighbors that this was going to happen because for many people, particularly in R1, this, their house is their biggest investment. And if ADUs are allowed in that area, it could change the value of their investment. It seems unfair to do that to them without giving them some knowledge about it and an opportunity to object. And I would think that with all these changes, we might want to run it by the electorate to see what they say.
Yeah, we tried to, we tried to do a lot of, you know, we held three public hearings on this ordinance. We actually did notices in the newspaper and on radio and we were hoping we would get more, more public input than we did. We, we got very little, as the mayor knows, we got very little input from the public on this. And we tried, we tried to do above and beyond what, of course, what we're required to do.
Well, I mean, people don't vote anymore anyway, so.
I will say through the question about conditional use permits, it's a big deal. You know, when I was in, when I worked in, in Kentucky, we had, we had an existing ADU ordinance that dated back to like 2003. And from 2003 to, I think it was 2000, let me say nineteen, they had only had like forty in that timeframe. And mainly because people said they didn't want to go through the conditional use permit process. But we had, when we went through that change process between 2019 and 20, we had a lot of people come out and said, hey, we're going to get so many of these. If you get rid of the CUP, we could be getting hundreds of these and everything. And we got rid of it in 2020. When I left in 23, we had forty approved. So in three years, we had forty in three years versus forty in, in what, fifteen years? So it doesn't drastically increase them. They are an expensive proposition. They, they're not cheap things necessarily to build. And so that, that deters a lot of people. But it is, it is, from what the research shows, the conditional use permit does deter them from happening. And so the one thing that, that's recommended to do is to build in the standards that you feel that are best, that would meet the concerns that neighbors would have and require them to meet those standards. If they do, then they can be approved administratively. If they don't meet one or more of them, they have the option to go through the conditional use permit process and will have to explain to their neighbors and to the commission, you know, why they should be granted a conditional use permit if they don't meet one or more of the standards.
Well, if your, if your largest investment is your house and that value of that might change, I don't know whether it will or not, it might change because of having all ADUs all around you, then I think that might influence people pretty strongly. And given the reticentness of the electorate to come out for these kinds of things, I think the conditional use is a great way of informing them. You send them a letter. It costs you a few bucks, but I think it saves a lot of anguish on the part of people who are worried about their retirement if they're basing it on the value of their home.
I mean, and I certainly understand, understand that concern. If, if, if anybody on the assembly, including Assembly Member Smiley, want me to look at some research on impacts of ADUs on property values, I'd be happy to look at that. I'm, I'm pretty sure I can find quite a few studies on this.
The, the other thing that would be nice to get is the number that I want to say assessing went through and found that weren't permitted.
Correct.
So it'd be good to have that.
Okay.
Beau and then Larry.
Thank you, and thank you for the prompt, Mr. Smiley. I have concerns about short-term rentals as well, so if, as, as drafted, there wouldn't be anything preventing someone purchasing, if there were a, a single-family home in R1 and then someone were to build an ADU, they could sell that property or someone could purchase that property and use both the single-family residence and the ADU and list them both as a vacation rental, correct? Or a short-term rental?
In the proposal, yeah, that would be the case. I would, I will say regarding the, and you could probably get around short-term rentals, but the current requirement of having the owner live on the property, I mean, certainly they could still do an ADU even if they consider that they're living on the property, they can just, you know, go somewhere else or go on vacation or whatever and still rent it. But that does deter a little bit because the current requirement would be that the, the owner has to live on the property in one of the units. So that might deter both units from being used, but I have heard of even owner-operated properties having short-term rentals in them as well.
Thank you. Yeah, that, that's my concern and, and for that reason, I, I do support ADUs. I do think they can alleviate some of the pressure and as you put it, and I agree, we're in the midst of a housing crisis in our community. I do believe this could help with that. However, I'm not, and, and thank you for, just to backtrack a bit, thank you for how thorough this was packaged. You and the commission did a fantastic job of providing very detailed information. I appreciate the AARP report and the AML document and then your summary. This was very well done. The only thing I can't support myself is removing that owner requirement. And that's simply because I want, I want to deter potential property owners from using that entire property, both a single-family home and an ADU for a short-term rental, which would just remove more housing capacity from our community. But thank you, this was very well done.
And the only thing I would respond to that would be, I don't know if, I'm not going to say the owner requirement, keeping it would, would deter people from using an ADU as a short-term rental. You, the assembly could add a requirement that they not be used as a vacation home, which is our current definition that we have in the code for the, for basically for a, a short-term rental or an Airbnb. You could put that in there and that would require, if someone wanted to run it that way, they would have to go through the conditional use permit process and they would have to notify their neighbors that they were doing that. Same thing if, if we added, left the owner requirement in there. Someone wanted to do, do one and wasn't the owner, the owner didn't live there, they would still have to go through the CUP process if they wanted to have it set up that way. Okay. Thank you, Mr. French.
Larry.
Well, first off, like Beau, I would like to thank you for the diligence that you had and the zoning commission for all the work that they did on this. I think it's a very, very important issue. We have a major crisis in our town regarding housing, whether it's available and the cost of it. And I think every agency, school district, the hospital, every professional organization or people that just want to live and retire here, it's, it's making it very, very difficult. Our student numbers are going down every year in the school district. There's a lot of evidence indicating that it's impacting Kodiak. A couple of things. You indicated that conditional use permits retard the number of ADU, ADU applications and that's reaffirmed, I read in some of the information from both the Alaska Municipal League and the AARP, that indeed the, the process, the municipal process of actually going through a conditional permit prevents many people from bothering to do it. Is that, and that's correct as you know it?
From, from the information I've read, same, same information you've read plus others, yes, that.
So there's no reason to believe that Kodiak would be any different. And one of the concerns that people have had over property values and ADUs, that they'll be surrounded by, you know, these small homes that may have lower income in their family, you know, that may degrade the value of their house. I mean, we don't see, even if you get rid of conditional use permits, swarms of people coming in and developing ADUs. So the fact that if you ADUs, if you look at forty in the Kodiak area, they would be spread so far apart that the idea that they're going to lower someone's property value by having a, someone else living in the neighborhood just doesn't make any sense to me, other than we know the conditional use. And I wanted to ask you, could you tell me the process of applying for a conditional use and how long it takes to go through that process and how much it costs? And since most ADUs are not built by, you know, contractors coming in and buildings, they're financed by owners generally, I think is what the research says. So how much does it cost to go through a conditional use process and who makes the decision?
So I, I'd have to go, I have to go back and look at our fee schedule. I know it's, you know, a few hundred dollars to, to apply for a conditional use permit. What I would say is the process, basically you have to go through a public hearing process through the Planning and Zoning Commission. There is a notice requirement involved in that for at least twenty days. People have to post notice on the property. So you're talking about in the time you go through the commission, so you're talking a month and a half to two months on the quick side probably, if they were to get certainly approved. It could be longer if, if there's, you know, delays in action or things like that. The one thing that the conditional use permit process does provide, and while a lot of people feel like it's someone that's a safeguard, is that, as, as the name suggests, with the word conditional in there, you can add conditions of approval onto them that could address some compatibility issues and things like that. And so that could extend the process if there's some concern at the commission level and the public level about a conditional, a CUP, it could extend it to another meeting, which could, you know, add another month to the process. But I'd say month and a half to two months on the short end, you know, is probably a reasonable idea, three to four months maybe at the most.
And you've also indicated in, based on your research and your own experience that you described just a few minutes ago, that while you, if you remove the conditional use, you have an increase but not necessarily an avalanche of applications that occur. So.
I mean, there's other things you have to go through. So, I mean, if you're going through the conditional use permit process, then you're going to go through the process of getting a building permit and doing it the right way. And, and that's not without cost, of course. And so, you know, the cost of, of an ADU is, can be fairly expensive. I mean, it's not going to be the cost of the property because you already own the property, so it's the cost of the construction. As we know on, in Alaska and especially in Kodiak, you know, the cost of construction materials and, and labor and stuff can be quite prohibitive. And so that's why you don't see a whole lot of, of ADUs being constructed. And you, you see that issue around the country. As I mentioned, there's other places where people will say, oh, we're going to get an avalanche of these if we get rid of the conditional use permit process. And you don't really see that many more being built. You see more, but not at some avalanche level of, of, of applications.
And finally, you know, I was reading a newspaper article from the early fifties. No, actually it wasn't, I'm going to get confused, when they built Nemets Park, which used to be called USA Homes, USA Homes when the Navy built it. And the Realtors, and quote, not Realtors, but Chamber of Commerce was opposed to building it because it would lower rents. So I mean, they actually went on record of not wanting to build these units in Kodiak because at that time they were living in Kodiak and they were afraid it would, you know, over whatever. So there's always been a tendency to say, not in my home or not in my area. So every time we try to subdivide land, we have people coming for us saying, we don't want to develop that land because that's our backyard. Or even in some communities where we have lots that are zoned and ready to sell, when we try to do that, they say no because people can't come out and say, no, we don't want other people living in our area. And I expected that kind of opposition to ADUs for the exact same thing. But I believe we're in a crisis right now and it's hurting our community. And I very much support not using these for, you know, vacation homes as you call it and restricting it. But I do believe if we don't do something quick, and making land available is a long, long process. I think the mayor one time said it was about a year. And we have a crisis right now where we can't fill our positions. And I don't think we can wait here. With an ADU, we, we could immediately have some increase in owner-built small apartments, whether they're in their home or detached. And finally, what I like about the work that you did is that you have to meet the current standards in place. Like you said, if you have a minimum size or a pre, a lot that's too small that couldn't be built by today's standards, you can't build one, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So in any case, thank you for your work. You know, I'm very interested in this. There's probably fine details that have to be worked out. But I do believe it would have an immediate effect as we have evidence in other communities to provide more housing for people expeditiously, unless we add more bureaucracy to it, which to me, what conditional use permits does. It's a bureaucracy that clearly prevents what's being developed. Scott, never mind. Thank you.
I will, I will say that, that I will, I do appreciate those who, who participated in the review process for ADUs. I know the mayor was involved, the Borough Assessor was involved, other folks were involved. And even though we didn't have a, a large outpouring of community involvement in that, we did have a lot of input, which led to some changes, proposed changes here in, in what's before you today. So I do appreciate all their, their assistance and they, they did help, you know, make this ordinance, you know, what it is today.
Thank you. James and then Scott.
So I'll, I'll see if I can keep my train of thought here. I'm not necessarily in favor of the, of the cup, conditional use permit, lot size. I, I like that we've, that you guys have changed it to a minimum lot size. I, I think that the detached ADU, requiring a detached ADU to be located on the side or behind, I don't really know that that really matters in a lot of locations except for in, in the out-of-city boundaries where some of those houses are located in the back of the lot, then you can't put an ADU because it can't go in the front of your house. So I think that that one I would, I would scratch out as well, that there's really not a design requirement other than I disagree with the parking requirements. I think that the parking requirements should still be two, whether it's, whether it's inside the city or outside the city, it should be two parking spaces. There's not enough on-street parking in a lot of these areas that have larger lot sizes because the roads are too narrow. And when you, when you drive down the street and you've got parking on both sides of that street, it becomes a one-lane road and most people don't know who has the right of way in that particular situation. So you get a standoff basically. And putting more cars on the street is not a good idea and I'm not in favor of changing that parking requirement. Changing the size, I'm not necessarily in disagreement with the eight hundred square feet, but there was a lot of discussion when we first went through this ADU to keep it at five seventy-five. So I'm, I'm kind of torn on that one because I, I kind of like keeping them smaller. I do believe that the owner should reside on the property. I don't necessarily like the removal of the requirement. I do not think that we should limit commerce or economics for the homeowner. And by limiting the use of this as a long-term rental versus a short-term rental, I think limits somebody's enterprise and I don't agree with that. And so, yes, I do agree with everybody up here that said it. We are in a housing crisis. I've been saying it for years. I have also said that we should not limit enterprise and by telling a homeowner that is trying to increase their income, that they cannot use a piece of their property that they cannot use a piece of their property to put an ADU on and not be able to use it as a short-term rental because that increases their income exponentially is, is a bad idea in my mind. And I'm not in favor of limiting what somebody can use it for, whether it's short-term or long-term. And I, I think there's other ways to go about finding new housing in this, in this town and this borough. By limiting that, I just don't agree with it. And so I'll leave it at that.
Okay, Scott, and then Beau.
The reason that I was so convinced on having the conditional use was it was the only mechanism that I could find where the person wanting to build an ADU had to notify their neighbors. And I would suggest that that's what you want to do. You don't want this to go forward without telling people what's going on. The conditional use permit is the way to do that according to the rules. So I would, I would argue that you need the conditional use permit for these in order to inform the people, the neighbors, that there's going to be a change. And it's not up to us to determine whether it's going to increase the value of the real estate or decrease it. We don't know. It's something in the future. But the fear that people would have, that it would reduce the value of their investment, I think is real. Thank you.
Beau, and then Ryan.
Thank you. I, I suppose if, if the owner requirement remained in place, I would then, that would be, my willingness to be in favor of allowing these ADUs to be used as short-term rental would be contingent upon maintaining the owner occupancy for the main, the primary residence. So I guess that would be the compromise I'd be willing to accept.
Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we are postulating what ifs and what could. We have our assessor here and I'd actually like to ask Seema what her input would be on what property values could or could not be impacted with ADUs passing, as we've discussed. And then I've got a follow-on as well.
Okay.
ADUs for the property owner are only going to drive up the value and drive up their taxes. So when you have an ADU on your property and you say, and we say, the assessing department says we are raising values, then you're going to get it hit twice. ADUs are harder to put to senior exemptions. So if you have a senior that wants an exemption on their property, you, you literally have to split it out. So they're not going to get the exemption on the ADU. They're only going to get it on their house and if their house, which a lot of, so during the commission's discussions, it was said, well, you know, my parents could move into the smaller one and rent out that bigger one, either on short-term or on, on long-term, however they wanted to do it. The ADU is the one that's going to be exempt then. And so their taxes are going to get up, go up. So when you're looking at it, I don't go in and say, oh, you're next to an ADU and so your property value is going to go down. That's not how we assess here. So the value won't go down because you have an ADU there. However, when you go to sell it, it might be harder because you have two short-term rentals right next to you. And if you're on an R1 lot and you have two short-term rentals or two properties, that's what people are going to be looking at. How many people are going to be living next door to me? How many cars are going to be in that driveway for them? So value-wise, I don't think that it's going to do anything to your neighbors. It's just going to do something to you when you build it. But it's going to be resale and I, I can't tell you what resale will be. It's going to totally depend on how people look at zoning. If I'm in an R1 zone, do I want something that has two properties on it? So the resale is what you have to look at and that is totally unpredictable for us right now.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Thank you very much for that. I hope that that's cleared up some confusion or at least give some insight. My follow-on question is very simple and sorry to put you both on the spot. Would either of you put an ADU on property if you were property owners, the way that this is written?
Refuse to answer.
I, I, I really can't answer that as the assessor.
Perfect. Thank you. That gives the insight to definitely a higher level of scrutiny that I think the assembly needs to weigh into this. If, if we have abstained answers, that, that definitely gives me some insight. So I appreciate that. That's all.
Steve.
I'm in favor of ADUs. But I do agree that on-street parking in lots of Kodiak is limited and in places where it's not being used. To reiterate, if you start getting more cars on the road, it very often makes it hard to navigate the road. The neighborhood I live in, there's a lot of parking and yes, very often it turns into a one-lane road. People aren't real good about pulling way over to the edge, this and that. So I would want to see two parking spaces even in the city. I would like to see the owner have to live in either one of them. You know, I don't care as long as they're in either one. And, but I have no problem being used for vacation rental or whatever. Town can only support so many of them. And it's going to reach a saturation point soon where it's not worth doing it. So therefore, I think it'll free up some other housing if there are some small ones. So I think that kind of balances itself out. That, I think, pretty well sums up my concerns. Parking's the big one and the owner occupied. Thank you.
Larry.
Thank you. That brings to mind perhaps a concern and that is, you know, the area where I grew up, there were three-hundred-and-forty-five houses that looked very much the same. And the streets were playgrounds. And, you know, you double, if you build a number, maybe this is a what-if, but if you add a number of them, you're going to increase the number of cars rolling through the streets, the parking, and you may create an unsafe neighborhood. But that assumes what I really don't think will happen and that is there'll be an all influx of people developing ADUs. I just don't see that happening. But I would call, would like to respond to Seema's comment if I could. The inference was a refusal to answer meant that you didn't, you had an opinion. What I heard you say as the assessor, it's not my place to make an opinion, not taking a side on one way or the other, or did I misinterpret that?
You did not.
So any inference.
It's not my opinion that public.
Right. Any inference that you abstain has nothing to do with pro or con or any opinion. That's correct.
I don't think it's my place to.
I appreciate that and I assume that's probably your opinion too. Thank you.
Amy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to remind the assembly that this work session item will be found again on the work session in two weeks. And so we have multiple opportunities to talk about this because there is a lot of information to take in. So I would appreciate it if you contacted me or Chris directly with questions that you might have so we can be ready for continued discussion in two weeks. And as of right now, it's not on the agenda. So unless we place it on the agenda on Tuesday, which I don't think we're quite ready for yet, we should have some more time to discuss this. And it's just a lot of material for people to read through. I think especially if you spend time on the AARP piece, they give a lot of ways that you can make it more palatable for communities with size restrictions, height restrictions, having them be made of similar materials of the other piece of, or the other building that's on the property. There's a lot of different things that communities have added in to make it blend a little more seamlessly into their community. So when you have time to look at that, if you have questions, me or Chris directly is great. Just let us know so we can be ready in two weeks.
Yeah. One of the things is, as Chris mentioned, there was very little turnout. Two out of three people, I think, that spoke on one occasion. One was myself and the other was Seema and then a private individual on there. So it's basically at the assembly level too in talking with one of the commissioners who voted to move it forward to the assembly, is to have more discussion at the assembly level about these different things because it wasn't moving much. And it took months to even get four votes to bring it to this point. So they acknowledged there's problems with it. And that's why we'll be having some of these, some more of these work sessions on it. Because what, what it also does is, you know, right now, I'm going to say, we have duplexes on R2 property being built right now that are seven-hundred-and-fifty, seven-hundred-and-fifty-two square feet per unit. And they have to meet all the parking requirements on there. And, and they do. So, you know, you're, you're creating some disparity and then you have the issue of basically you're potentially, every legal lot in an R1 district, you're turning into a duplex. And that's a discussion that needs to get out there to the public that is not out there. And so, you know, that's why Amy and Scott and I talked about this and brought it forward as a discussion item first because we think it's going to take multiple discussion items to get something that we then present. So, so it's not like it was a slam dunk at planning and zoning. There's problems with it and it's a discussion that needs to take place at a higher level. And that's why it's here and we'll continue to go over it. So.
Steve.
I don't know whether it'd be appropriate or not. But before the next work session it's discussed at, is it appropriate for someone from the borough to ask the newspaper to write an article about this and that we're looking for public input? And I don't know the answer to that question. I think that after the next work session out that we bring this forward, then possibly, because we'll have some more discussion on the, what's the effect of, of R1 versus R2? And, you know, then have something that we determine we want to go out there with and questions for the public. Larry.
Along with Steve's comments, and maybe this has already happened, but I found reading through the AARP and the Alaska Municipal League treatise, if you will, on accessory dwelling units to be outstanding. And could we find some way to post them on our website? Get permission so that people who really want to explore can go to a really good resource that talks about the pros and cons and what different communities in Alaska are doing or across the nation?
I'm sure that we can get the link added to the community development page. Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to the next discussion item, which is be discussed writing a letter to the State of Alaska Alcohol and Marijuana Control Office regarding the possible relocation of the restaurant or eating place license renewal application for Sizzler Burger and Peking Restaurant, license number 2611, combined renewal notice. This was an agenda item requested by Mr. Turner and put it on. I'm not sure, Nova, do you want to give a staff report first? And then James, I'll let you speak.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your agenda packet, I have, in the discussion part of the agenda summary, I have given you a summary of the actions that have, that the assembly has taken the past few months. I have also reached out to AMCO and I have been communicating with a regulation specialist. And I have asked her for options or avenues where, you know, this could be possibly done. And what she has given me is that the assembly would have the opportunity to lodge a protest for the continued operation of the license. But that's not going to happen. Well, we have the opportunity to do that before January, end of January thirty-one or end of January of next year, 2025, when the license is about to enter its two years. So that's the option I was given. I would like to also refer to what is attached to my clerk's report. I have given you a comprehensive list of the current active licenses in Kodiak. When I reached out to AMCO, they said that the, that license 2611 Sizzler Burger and Peking Restaurant license is currently temporarily surrendered. And the definition of temporarily, temporarily surrendered is on the last page of that attachment. And I'm going to read it to you. Temporarily surrendered means the license is active and the license is counted towards the population limits of the local governing body in which it is located. But the physical license is surrendered to AMCO and not in use by the licensee. When the licensee is ready to use the license again at the same location, they can reach out to AMCO to get the physical license returned. This, of course, is dependent on each license's particular circumstances. So I just wanted to share that with you and I'm going to refer the rest of the report to Assembly Member Turner.
Before I turn it over to Mr. Turner, I'd like to ask about the second license, which is 3293 Second Floor Restaurant. Says last processed February seventeenth, 2020. Renewal still to be reviewed by an examiner for 2425. What exactly does that mean? Are they four years behind?
Mr. Mayor, so when I reached out to AMCO, there's also an attachment which is on white paper. I was gone, when I moved to the city, before I moved to the city, we were doing by annual review of these licenses so that we can make sure that everyone's turning in their applications or we know at least the status of the applications. When I returned to the borough, it seems that that process have been dropped. So I didn't know that some of these applications have not been transmitted to the borough for some reason or the other. Or I'm not sure if they have been transmitted to the borough and they were not processed. And because of the, they're shorthanded at AMCO and the previous employees are not there anymore. So they can't tell me really if they have been sent to the borough and they were not processed. So the response was that they don't know what happened. How come we were not informed or what happened to them? Why it looks like there, nothing has been done the past four years. But the status of these licenses that were not highlighted in yellow, they're all currently active.
Including?
Including Second Floor Restaurant. However, the application for 24 to 25 is still being reviewed. They're a little behind with processing the renewals. So they extended those ones that have expired in 2023, actually December twenty-three, and they've given them until August of this year.
Which were almost at the very end of.
Correct. So, but, so the status of that license is still being reviewed by, or is still, is, is still has to be reviewed by an examiner.
Did the city respond on the Second Floor Restaurant?
I am not.
3293 at any time during the last four years?
I have no idea. I have. I haven't, my, my limited time of dealing with this, I haven't had the chance to reach out to the city if they've received a notice. But I went back to the records that we have here at the borough and this is what I found.
Yeah. And I was asking a lot of questions during the last week and Nova was doing everything she could to, to process that information and get this stuff to us for tonight. So I, I appreciate everything you've done and I realize that's another question, more, more information because one of the things is, is that I'm seeing is, Second Floor Restaurant, it's almost eight years in my mind that that hasn't existed for. And so, so that is a concern on there. So, next is James and then Larry and then Bo.
So I had a discussion with an individual about this. I heard it on the radio. Yeah, it's on. You can't hear me? Do you want me to get closer?
There, that's better.
Do you want me to? So I had a conversation with somebody after a radio discussion. I heard it on the radio. I stopped by the radio. I had some concerns because we had just voted the week before on no contest. But that was a lot of information that we were given at the time did not kind of coincide with what was, what is actual on the table or actually on the table. And so when we, when we voted, I think the majority of us had reservations on no contest. I know that we were, it was recommended that we contested just because they hadn't been open for a while. But we had the discussion that no contest at the time because nobody else was interested and there was multiple licenses still available. We also were discussing that there was no real value in the license for anybody else. So to sell it, there really wasn't any, any dollar value involved. And that is not necessarily, in my mind, now true. So once we sent a no contest to the state, it was approved on the ninth, as you can see in the, in the letter. I, I hear this conversation on the radio and, and that piqued my interest. As soon as I was getting out of my vehicle, I was going to shut off the radio and, or the, the vehicle and, and go into the establishment that I was heading into. And I sat there for another 10 or 15 minutes listening to the conversation. I turned my truck back on and I drove to the radio station to follow up on this conversation because I was really irritated at the time. And, you know, come to find out now the, the particulars of this, now they want to get rid of it or they want to sell it to somebody, it doesn't matter who, they're just talking about it. You know, we, we've, all, I mean, when I was sitting here listening to the conversation, it sounded like three of us changed our mind that night on no contest. At, at the time, it was, we'll, we'll take the, what the clerk had said and, and contest it. And after the discussion, it was like, well, this seems simple enough, you know, she's been in business for a long time, so let's let it keep going because there's more licenses out there. And that wasn't necessarily a true statement. And so I called Nova and I said, you know, I want to find out if we can put in a no contest even though we're past that time or at least send in a letter stating, I should say, I brought in a piece of paper and then Nova called me, a letter to AMCO to state that we weren't necessarily given the full information at the time, or at least there was some confusion on our part. And now that the person wants to sell the license, they're not really doing something that they said that they were going to do when they stood in front of us and told us that they wanted to reopen in another location. And so that's why it's in front of you again and I hope that you guys have a good discussion about it.
Larry, then Bo, then Ryan.
Well, I decided to support the request for renewal when I heard that there were multiple licenses available. And now that I find out that's not true, then my opinion strongly changes. And I believe that for our community to grow, we have to have new people coming on board and we have to make it available to them. It doesn't mean that somebody can't apply again. I'm sure that's an ongoing process, but I'm concerned to hear that there aren't multiple licenses. If there weren't, then we're creating unfair competition with people that are trying to start something in the community. So I'm sort of disappointed that we had the wrong information available and I'm sure that was accidental, but I'm just very disappointed. And as far as selling the licenses, that was not something that came up at all. It was, the whole discussion was to protect somebody's history and support, which is a good thing to do for government to consider. I really strongly believe that, but selling a license has nothing to do with starting another operation. Thank you.
Bo, then Ryan.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I wasn't at the August 1st meeting. I, I've, I've watched the meeting. I've spoken to several people now. If I were at that meeting, I still would have objected to the renewal, even if we had some misinformation that there were multiple licenses available, then to me, that means that person could, if they moved locations, could have applied for one of those multiple licenses available, freeing up the current license for someone else to use. I agree with Mr. Turner that, and I fully support submitting a letter of revocation. This permit needs to go to somebody who's willing to use it now. Thank you.
Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I led the discussion and championed the efforts based off of information that I received from calling AMCO in a seven to 10 minute phone call. The information that I received is not consistent with information that's here and my research was absolutely flawed. It was not intentional. I literally spent 10 minutes or less on this issue, thinking that this was an open-closed case. And I'm sorry, my research was flawed. It was not intentional. What bothers me the most out of this is that there is a statement that says, we bend the rules for community members. That bugs me to no end because that's not who we are as a governing body. So I will absolutely withdraw my support for this renewal and figure out whatever we need to do to make this right. And I made a mistake and I apologize in arid research. Period.
Steve? Well, first, from linking this and what I understand, there are only four licenses of this classification, correct?
Correct.
And she is tying up two of them.
Correct.
And she has been out of business on the second floor for years and years and a few years at the Sizzler Burger. I think she's had plenty of opportunity to open at a different location and has enough with proper effort to do so. And so I can't support renewing these licenses. I think, like Ryan and others have said, you need to go to someone who will start using it now, not some questionable time in the future saying, as we all know how long those establishments have been closed. And if she were actively trying to reopen, she would at least be using one of them, in my opinion. So yes, I am in support of a letter saying, we, I don't know whether we need to say we were given bad information or what, but upon further discussion and review, do not support this. And that's my opinion. Thank you. James?
Question for Nova. Do we have, so it says we have to have it in before the 31st of January. So that puts it, puts us back 60 days sometime around the first week of December, correct, is when we can submit that again? So we can't do anything now? Go ahead.
I think we can.
I think if you want to write the letter and even rescind, you know, if you want to make a stronger statement about it, we can rescind the action that you've taken at the last meeting and then also write a letter if you wish to do that early on. And then during the biannual process, you can, we can write an objection letter before January 31. So we want to make sure that that's in their record, that they're not going to miss it because you're going to have technically information, a letter ahead of time and then a part of the biannual process, if you'd like to do that.
Let me clarify that just a minute and then Amy on there. What I'm hearing is a, a letter of revocation on the license number 2611 is what you're suggesting and then a letter of objection at this time on the license 3293, realizing we would do another objection at the end of November 1st of December again.
No, Mr. Mayor, I'm giving you options. So you can actually rescind the action that you've taken at the last meeting and also write a letter of revocation that we, we will, we will let.
That's what I mean.
Yes. And then, but that's for license 26.
On 3293.
No, it's for license 2611.
Right. I understand that part.
Right.
But I want to object to any renewal of 3293.
So 3293 is forthcoming. It's being renewed and as soon as we get the notification, we're going to go through the same process and you will have an opportunity to also object to the 3293.
I'd really like to object now. Amy and then Bo.
That's just what I was going to clarify is that, that Second Floor Restaurant, that second license will come through this same process as soon as it's finished, the review process of AMCO, which Nova told us was supposed to be done by the end of August. So we should see fairly soon and then we will have a chance to protest that one just the same way. So that, the first one, that license has been renewed. So it is, it is there and we can't undo what they've done, but for this, because we're so, they're so far behind, that license was supposed to be for all of 2024 and all of 2025. It will be one year done at the end of December. So it's just because they're running late. So we actually have an opportunity in just a few months to protest.
Bo?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Manager and Nova for that info. So I support both, taking both of those actions, rescinding that decision to renewal and also sending the letter. I think we should do both. I think the more information coming to AMCO, even though they're backlog, the better. This, this needs to get reversed. So we should do both.
Jared?
I think we should think about the, the scope and the reasoning of our, of our revocation letters. There's a, in the code, it says that, you know, if, if we, if we object, it's because there's some borough interest, right, that has been, or that it falls, you know, inside of the borough's interest that we should do this. And at our discussion a few weeks ago, and this is what, you know, kind of turned, turned the tide for me too, a few weeks ago, was I think the, the concerns and the interests that were presented to us, we determined that these were ultimately not the burden of the license owner, but there was the burden of the building owner. And so I don't think then that we can use, because, and I still kind of agree with that. I think, one, what, then, then, then what is the interest? Because if we decided a couple of weeks ago that these, this has nothing to do with, you know, the application or whatever. So, so I would recommend that whatever letter of revocation that we enter, and I'll open this up to the group too, is one about economic development. You know, maybe that is the interest that has been hindered with these, with these license applications here. But I think that for us to be in, aligned with code, we need to phrase whatever objection we have in terms of the interests. And if we want to relitigate these interests, again, that were first presented to us, that's fine too. But I would like, I would like that to be clarified before a letter is written and before we vote on, on the letter.
Scott, then Ryan, then Steve?
Well, I think that one of the reasons that I was supportive of the, of this was that the city had pretty much done it already and it's in their bailiwick and everything. So I was convinced by their actions in addition to having plenty of extra permits out there. So it says on the thing here that the city has postponed the resolution now and will, and it's been postponed for 60 more days. So I think we're, that part of the argument is gone and I think we should change our decision or move as Jared had said.
Ryan, then Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support Mr. Griffin's suggestion. At that previous work session, I had stated that we don't want to stymied economic growth. We did have testimony that the applicant's intent was to open a new location. So I still stand by the, we do not want to stymied economic growth. When I learned that the license was potentially for sale, I've got to be honest, I felt absolutely deceived and lied to. And that is not supporting economic growth. That's profiteering off of a limited license. I do want to bring the assembly's attention to where my confusion still remains. So in the clerk's attachment, we look at currently active licenses. This is very conveniently color coded. That didn't happen, obviously, in a phone conversation, but I'm still concerned that we have license holders with inappropriate designations that are not congruent with what we know these locations to be. This is extremely confusing still to me. I didn't even know that there were different license permits. I don't drink, so I don't know these things. And so what I would like to do is if we're authoring a letter, I would like to not only author that letter in support of economic growth and transferring the license to somebody willing to put that license to work, but also to try and get these designations in order so that people after me aren't confused with how these designations work. Because the, look at the two pages, there are licenses here. I'm, I'm still confused. And so you can look down at the third page of this, maybe, I'm sorry, the fourth page of this, and we see a new organization that recently opened here in Kodiak, has a 6,000 permit number. This again is consistent with information that I received over the phone in 10 minutes that you can apply and get these. And so if that's truly not the case, if there's differences in wineries and wholesale general and packaging store and distillery, that's beyond my means of comprehension. And so I, I would like some clarification on how those work. Thank you.
Okay. Steve? I'd like to ask the clerk, because she read that, and under temporary surrender, I thought it said you were opening in the same location. So how is she planning to open in a new location and have a temporary surrender? It seems those two contradict each other to me.
I understand what you're saying and I agree with you and I haven't had the chance to really delve into what's going to happen if they're not in another location. So there's a lot of questions still that I have to ask. I'm learning in the process, so thank you.
And especially since the state rules have, have changed a year ago. Steve? I think if we write a letter and we know that location is not available, it should be stated that she's trying to renew a license under suspension, but not open in the same location as required. That should be, in my opinion, that should be included in the letter.
That should be, in my opinion, that should be included in the letter.
Ryan, then James.
You know, the clerk's office has already done a tremendous amount of research on this. I would actually ask if the clerk and the staff would prepare a letter in a draft format and push it out to the Assembly so that we can provide some input and at least get a basis or a foundation to move forward from, would be probably the easiest. That way, everybody can chime in and, and we can push that thing forward. Thank you.
James?
So one of the other thing, well, each of these has a different, each of these color codes has a different type of business, if you will, and how they use their license or permit. The restaurant eating place probably is one of those that liability for insurance is a little bit different because it's only certain beverages. It could be a number of different reasons. But the restaurant eating place limitations is basically, if I remember correctly, it's 1,100 populous for each permit. And in the city, it's less than that, but they still went to a four permit for the city. So if the population was to grow, then you could potentially see another license come in. If the population decreases, if one of those establishments closes, then you would probably see that license go away. What I think that we need to work towards in this, because we are having this conflict at this point, is trying to get that populous number down to a more reasonable number so that we have more licenses for that particular type of establishment, if you will. And yes, I agree, there are a number of these that should be listed in that restaurant eating place category, but are in-
Something else.
Different beverage dispensaries for the most of, for the most part. And that's partly because they take on that liability of the, for the insurance, I think, is why they went with that particular license.
Larry?
So I just want to make sure that we understand, we're sort of setting a precedent here. If the owner of a license, if they close their building for a year and they apply for a license, are we going to say no? Because they're not in business and they're holding a license? Because that's what we're doing here, and I, I do support denying this. But are we setting a precedence that we need to follow? Because other restaurants have closed down and opened up again after some time. And did they surrender their license when they closed up? And then they held on to it until they opened up a year or two later? And do we know, or can we keep track of active licenses? So if somebody closes, it's on this list, do we know about it? Should we submit, because we're short on license, should we submit immediately a letter? Denying it, because that's really what we're doing here. We're saying somebody who closed their business for a lengthy period of time wants to renew a license, and we're saying, no, there's limited licenses. Or we might say that, if that's what we vote to, there's limited licenses. And we believe if you're not going to use it, it needs to be available to another business that may need it or want to use it. So if we're setting a type of precedent, how do we keep track of it? How do we enforce it? When I say, how do we keep track of it if somebody closes up? Because, you know, we might get another one of these, and are we going to use the same basis to say no? Because that's a concern that I have right now. Is are we prepared to do this on a regular basis? But it seems to me we don't keep track of it because these buildings have been closed for a long time, and nobody's done anything, you know, on it, one way or the other. And it seems to me we have to have some kind of process of monitoring, of monitoring this, particularly because we may have businesses in line waiting to use those permits. And I do support, if people are selling these licenses, we probably need more of them, perhaps, available. So, anyway, thank you.
James?
I'd like to answer that probably in a roundabout way. I don't think that that's what we're trying to do, a set of precedents. What I'm trying, what the reason why I brought it forward was, was not to say, oh, well, we want to put an objection in. I want it revoked. Because in the testimony that we were giving, that we were given, that is not correct anymore. So whether she had it at that time just to get us convinced, or whether she changed her mind the next day after having the discussion with us, that has changed. And she is not going to use this license, so I think that it should be revoked. And that's why I brought it back to the Assembly.
Thank you.
Okay, so direction going forward is to draft some kind of letter. The clerks to work on drafting a letter to bring back to us to peruse for the September 5th meeting.
Okay.
Are you wanting to take action on September 5th? Okay, are there any other reasons aside from stymieing economic growth that you would like to give me so I can start the draft?
Steve?
Well, the requirement of opening in the same location, and she's not, that should definitely be brought up.
Okay, I have that too, yeah. Any other?
Amy, then Bo.
I think that the borough should look at if she's paying business personal property tax on business property. Because if she's not, and she's holding a license, then that's definite borough interest that we are not getting.
Personal property tax?
Business personal property.
Okay.
Which, it doesn't matter if she's the owner of the building or not for that.
Bo, then Ryan?
I would add that the, the Assembly at that time was also making that decision based on misinformation.
Okay.
Ryan?
I would just urge us to stop there. Because at some point, this is going to turn slanderous. And I would caution us moving forward on how we direct the clerk's office to start a baseline so that we can then provide input from that baseline.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to take a seven-minute break. Thank you.
We will go ahead and reconvene. Yeah, she's on her way, that was the signal. We got the packet review next, awards and presentations. There's a proclamation declaring September 16th to 20th Kodiak Adult Education and Family Literacy Week. Under committee reports, there is on Friday, September 6th, the Cook Inlet Regional Citizens Advisory Council will have their board meeting in Kodiak. Pardon me?
Where?
At the KI.
Okay.
On there, downstairs, if I'm not mistaken. And I asked them to, somebody to come. Turned out today, I had a meeting with them. It was Executive Committee and Audit Committee, and, over the phone. And Mike Munger, Executive Director, has another meeting in Anchorage and won't be able to get in until the 6:30 flight. But Shaylan Cochran, their Communications Director, is hoping to get in on the 2:30 flight to possibly be here. So we're going, it's still going to be listed on there, but something may happen with weather or whatever. We'll see on there. I thought it was a good time. Cook Inlet, in many years, has not been before the Borough Assembly, and I thought it'd be good to make a presentation since they were ideally in town. So taking, trying to take advantage of that. So then the, next is public hearings. And there's ordinance number 2025-6, amending various sections in the Title II Administration and Personnel and Title III Revenue and Finance in order to clarify the interpretation of the two-thirds vote of the governing body. Staff report, Nova.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Assembly. The current provisions of the Borough Code demonstrate inconsistencies. So this is a cleanup ordinance. And we search all the two-thirds language in the code, and I think we're capturing them and, and cleaning them up with this ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the contracts. There is a contract number 2025-5, Agreement for the Provision of Destination Marketing and Tourism Development Program with Kodiak Island Convention and Visitor Bureau, parentheses, Discover Kodiak. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last regular meeting, the Executive Director of Discover Kodiak, Brock Simmons, came in and gave the four quarterly reports for fiscal year '24, bringing the Assembly up to speed on what Discover Kodiak has been doing for the last year. We said that we were going to hold that contract up until those reports were given. Now that it's done, the contract is back on. It's a, the same contract that we've had with Discover Kodiak for several years in the amount of $75,000 to support marketing for tourism in the archipelago.
Any questions or discussion on, on this one? Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually really appreciated the Executive Director coming in. Please extend my appreciation that those quarterly reports were by my request. So I definitely want to make sure that they understand my appreciation. I had an interesting conversation today with someone in this industry. And they had indicated that their business is thriving right now, but they are worried about the baby, the baby boomer, kind of the prevalence of them spending money is, is trending downwards with their kind of wish list. It's now being taken over by other obligations, family, grandkids, things of that nature. And so I, I think that the Discover Kodiak and the tourism market in Kodiak is extremely important. I'm, I'm supportive of the existing contract as it's proposed, but I would like to at least put some food for thought for increasing that amount in concurrent years. Not necessarily changing the contract as it states now, but just something as we look at other budget cycles moving forward and how we can fund that and increasing that amount, I think would be in the most advantageous behavior that we could do as an Assembly. Thank you.
Bo?
Thank you, Mr. Sherrod. And I was going to wait till Assembly member comments, but this is a good segue. I, if I understand correctly, the revenue for funding Discover Kodiak is based solely from, or derived solely from short-term rental revenue, is that correct? I mean, as far as the $75,000 from the borough?
Yes, that is through accommodations taxes.
Right, so if we were to increase that, then that would, that would still come from the same pool, correct? And then, in turn, that would reduce the amount of funding available for staffing- for staffing the KFRC Touch Tank Aquarium Education Center, correct?
That is where we are currently putting the excess, yes.
Okay, thank you. I don't support that for that reason. I do appreciate the sentiment. However, this, in addition to what that facility provides, based on, you know, what our rental obligation is for the leasing, it is also, also an educational facility for our community and visitors alike. I keep forgetting to bring this really awesome card with crab and googly eyes, and this is from the Ocean Science Discovery Program. I will just skip down to, in total, 460 students came out for a marine science unit to the OSDL this spring. Again, thank you for all who made this happen. So these, this funding helped make this happen for these 460 students. I volunteered for a module on this. These are, these are people from our community. These are kids that come from all parts of our community. There was Coast Guard kids, there were city kids, there were village kids in there. Everyone had a great time learning about the marine sciences. These are future stewards of these resources. These are future plant managers. These are future biologists, Fisher people. So I can't emphasize enough the importance of keeping this facility going for more than just tourism. It's an educational facility for our community and visitors alike.
Thank you. Basically, this is going forward on the agenda for $75,000. I'll have discussion on it at the regular meeting on September 5th. Scott?
How long has it been at $75,000?
I don't have that exact number. I do remember when I was there, looking in the history, it had been 85 for a while. Luckily, because the move has been made to digital, a lot of the publishing costs for publishing our magazine went down, and we don't have to ship them all over the place, and we don't have to produce as many. So some of those costs have gone down as we have started to try to appeal to those, sorry, Discover Kodiak as they try to appeal. It's hard to divorce that world, I guess, as they try to appeal to a younger generation. So that concern for the baby boomers and how they're spending money is real. But I've heard that the millennials, because we forget about Gen X and that they exist, so we'll just go straight to millennials. I'm a Gen Xer, so I can say that, right? So millennials are starting to have more discretionary funding, so they're starting to make up that gap in tourism. So as baby boomers are spending their money in other places, the millennials are stepping up to fill in those gaps. So with the reduced costs for publication, but there are always exciting programs, and so I would invite Discover Kodiak to come in and make suggestions on how that money could be spent. That would be an interesting conversation for the Assembly to discuss.
Scott, then Bo.
Has there been a cost of living increase in all those years?
That is covered through the salaries. This is not the only funding source that Discover Kodiak has.
Thank you.
Bo?
And then Steve. James, did you have your hand up?
No.
Okay. Bo and then Steve.
Thank you. Do we, do we have any information? Well, I don't even know if we're able to receive this kind of information. Before I would even consider an increase in the amount that comes from the Borough, do we have any indication as far as how their revenues are doing from those they're sponsored by?
So the only real sign that we have on how tourism is doing is how much accommodation tax is coming in. So assuming that most of those people are Discover Kodiak members, we, you know, that's a, that would, we could figure that out, but that's a, that's a hard line to draw.
So, so if, may I follow up?
Go ahead.
So to me, that, I interpret that as, as revenues increase from that funding source, and that means tourism is doing well, and they wouldn't necessarily need to rely on the Borough to increase funding from our end.
Correct.
That's my interpretation.
Bo, then Steve. Steve?
Well, I guess it was a similar question. Do we know how the bed tax revenue for the Borough is increasing, decreasing, how it's trending?
I can tell you that it's been increasing since tourism really started to come back in 2022 after the pandemic, and it's, we've had some very good years as an island with tourism. And I would, the state Alaska Tourism Industry Association used to do a million-dollar-plus study on tourism every year that told us how tourism was trending. That hasn't been done since 2017. So all that information is really old, and that organization hasn't been funded the way that it used to be, so that study just isn't being done anymore. So we had to extrapolate information just to guess what Kodiak was doing anyway, because it wasn't a major focus area. But Discover Kodiak will have to actually commission a study a few years ago, that was around $40,000, to see what tourism is actually doing here. So if, if that kind of information is required, that's how it has to get done.
Ryan, then Steve. Oh, Steve, you got a follow-up on that?
Well, I think we've discussed a fair amount, possibly raising in the future and stuff, but I think that can be delayed, and we should stick to what's on the table right now. And then in the future, we can talk about the other issues and how to deal with it.
And what the financial condition of the organization is, I would want to see financial information before giving any organization more money.
Yeah, but I think for now, we should stick to what's.
And that's what we're going forward to the meeting. Ryan, then James?
I just want to get a point of clarification, perhaps just from my own knowledge. I was under the impression that the accommodation tax does not go directly to Discover Kodiak. They don't actually write a check. It actually, the tax has to be collected by a municipal entity, which is us, right?
Yes. So the Accommodation Tax Code, when it was put into place, says that the Kodiak Island Convention and Visitors Bureau is eligible for up to 75% of the tax collected. And so each year when that contract is renewed, it's that level. It hasn't been completed that way. It's been a pretty steady standard amount from both the Borough and the City. The City is, it has been at 108. I understood that they did go up this year. When I was involved with Discover Kodiak, I was told that if I did want more money, then I needed to bring my project request during budget cycle to the Borough and the City and ask for more money that way.
So just as, if I can.
Continue.
So if we are thriving and that accommodation tax piggybank, if you will, continues to grow, and we are in a position where we can fund, what we all agree up here is, is an important aspect of, you know, the Fishery Center and the Touch Tank, we've all agreed that that's important. However, if there's an excess of funds or a surplus of funds, where do those funds go?
There was a surplus of funds in the past before 2020, so we are distributing money from the year before. So in 2021, when there wasn't money from 2020 to come in, and also in 2022, when the funds were diminished due to the lack of tourism in 2021, that surplus was used to fund that contract during those down years. It's one of those funds that can hold a balance from year to year, not like our general fund, but that could. And so that surplus money was used to fund that contract in the years where tourism was slow.
That's exactly the information I'm looking for. So when we move this thing forward in future discussions, I would love to have the accommodation tax breakdown of what was collected, that formula, because if we're statutorily or municipally obligated to the formula, I'd like to go back to the way that things are supposed to be. And, and then also what the Touch Tank costs are, that in my mind is transparent budgeting, and I would love for that to happen in the future. And I'll go back to this contract, to this stand down. Thanks.
James?
That was a lot of information. Thank you. So thank you for bringing up the fact that we talked about it during the budget cycle. So we basically budgeted for this this year for FY '25. And so we're just doing the contract at this point for FY '25, correct? Okay. So this is just basically cleanup of what we were supposed to do. It's just, this is when the contract comes up. So when we start discussions, I shouldn't say we, when the Assembly starts discussions on the new FY '26, I think that's when you start discussing increasing or decreasing that number. And that ta, that bed tax is a percentage. And so the fluctuation of daily expense or the, the cost for each unit that is rented out on a bed tax, so that, that number could fluctuate depending on what they're asking during that time. Maybe in 2019, they were asking 325 a night, but in 2020, they were only asking 97 a night. That number is going to go up and down. And so we take a guess during the budget cycle, just like we do on everything else, that that number is going to come in at a similar rate every single time. And so if I remember correctly, we were at 85 when I got on the Assembly, and there were a couple of Scots on the Assembly at the time, and it was voted to decrease that. And part of the decrease at the time to 75 was not because of the revenue that we were receiving, but because we were trying to find ways to fix the crisis that we were having at the time on debt service. And so we lowered that to 75, and if I remember correctly, that's where we've been, because we haven't wanted to change that. This year, we could have, but we wanted to lower the mill rate, and so we didn't even discuss that piece. And so it wasn't debt service at the time, it was mill rate this time. So that's why it's been at 75, if I remember correctly. Maybe the other two Scots may remember the same discussions, but it's at 85 to Discover Kodiak was because we had the funds available. We took it down to 75 because we wanted to use some of that for something else.
And those, those reductions allowed the fund to build up and pay for the year where there was next to no revenue. Then we wouldn't have been able to pay them anything. So, so it's always good to have a fund balance in there when emergency, and that was a prime example. So Larry, and then Bo?
Just a quick comment. Periodically, when we discuss budget items that, you know, are sort of outliers from the main budget, we say, well, we didn't talk about that during budget time. We need to wait till next time we do budget. But it seems to happen over and over again, you know? And I wish there was a whiteboard up there that said, during next year's budget, we are going to talk about this item, this item, and as long as it's hung up straight, which it won't be. Where we actually do that, because we say, well, we'll talk about it next year, but we probably won't, because no one will think about it, and we'll be in the, you know, give and take of the budget. So I wish there was something like what you put together, NOVA, relative to motions or, you know, agenda items that people want to talk about on the yellow list, so that we could sort of add to that. So when we get to budget time, you know, something exactly like that. So when we get to budget, we won't forget those things, so we don't have to say, at the end of a really good discussion, but this is for another year, so we need to do that during budget time. The other comment, I wanted to respond to Bo talking about the importance of the Touch Tank. And after working with the Touch Tank for years and thousands of kids, he's absolutely right. It's an incredible educational experience for young kids. But I also want to point out, it would be nice, you know, we used to have an incredible ocean bowl team, state champion, I think, when you're under Greg Banker, and had a lot of kids involved, and it was funded with a little grant that I had. And it was fun, Mrs., what's her name? I can't pronounce it.
Dushtrowoff.
Dushtrowoff ran it and did an incredible job and advocated every year and put in countless hours of time. But it would be nice if, and you could say, well, that's part of the overall district budget, but it's, their budget isn't formulated that way. And if, if we sort of carry on Bo's vision for the Touch Tank and using some of this money, we could do perhaps the same thing for the secondary level, where kids are really deciding what they want to do with their lives.
Bo, and then James.
Thank you. And so we have discussed this. Matter of fact, we discussed this, let's see, to be scheduled. Anyhow, there was an ordinance we discussed on how to increase the revenue that this organization could have access to. That particular organization spoke out against increasing revenue, as well, as did the Assembly. So this has been discussed, and it was discussed at length, and both the Assembly and this organization rejected it. So just wanted to point that out.
James?
So because it was brought up and allowed to be discussed, the Touch Tank. So years ago, the leasing of the, or the lease or, I should say.
Leasing.
The leasing of the facility used to pay for somebody to be there, and they renegotiated that contract to not have it there anymore, have a person there anymore. And so then the Borough Assembly had to decide, did we want to pay for somebody to be there? And that Assembly at the time didn't want to spend that much money, because again, we were worried about debt service. And so we've had it on a limited basis. It wasn't, it wasn't because we needed to take it from the tourism. It wasn't because we needed to take it from here. It's just we didn't want to pay for somebody to sit there seven days a week for 10 to 12 hours. And so unless we want to do that, if that's what we're discussing, instead of having, having the tourism budget, then we need to have that discussion further, but we should just be sticking to the tourism budget and contract.
Okay. I'd like to go ahead and move off of this at this time. I will only give you one other piece of information, and that is that the reason this has taken time to come forward to you is because Discover Kodiak cannot, had not fulfilled their contract for the previous year. And it wasn't until those commitments that are in their contract were fulfilled, which was speaking before us, that this contract was going to come forward. So that's why there's a little delay here. So with that, we will have this next week. The next item is contract number FY 2025-22, baler floor overlay replacement by Ram Enterprises in the amount of $207,896.23. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for the resurfacing of the tipping floor in the baler facility. Staff issued an invitation for bid on July 29th of this year. Bids were due by August 26th with the mandatory pre-bid meeting on August 13th. We did have two contractors come to the pre-bid meeting, and only one contractor submit. Dave is here tonight to help us with the details of that.
What she said. So this is for 1,300 square feet. So this is the wear layer where the, the roll-off dumpsters and the, the dump garbage trucks and whatnot come into the baler. We are changing, and the price has increased a bit on this, because we're changing the type of concrete. We're going to a fly ash mix with a 5,600 PSI rather than the standard 4,500 PSI that Brecken normally does. That one was, the, the regular concrete was in 2007. In 2015, we brought in a contractor who brought in product that I believe did not necessarily install it correctly. But this is a high-wear layer, and if you, if you're standing there and they dump, they tip a garbage truck and an engine block comes out and hits, you would know why we need to replace this. So this only replaces the four-and-a-half-inch wear layer. This is actually a 17-inch concrete slab, and we restrict the way that the demolition can be done, so it does not hurt or further damage the substrate and drive the cost. Happy to answer questions.
Scott?
Is there metal in that four inches?
There is, there's currently the remains of small wide-flange I-beams that were actually we're actually going to remove because if you've ever paid, if you've ever been out there, the uniloader that pushes the garbage has a rubber edge. And it, those particular, the top of the wide-flange beam has worn off, so they're knife edges. And that's slightly dangerous when you're on that slippery floor and that edge catches. So those will be removed, which is why we're going to the higher PSI concrete.
So wire in it, too?
There's no wire in it. They'll be probably fortified fiber. And we're also going to use granite chips, which we've already checked that the local concrete, concrete manufacturer has. So again, there's a higher cost for that concrete.
Thank you.
Ryan.
So in your opening statement, you said that in two thousand and fifteen, a contractor came in and what we believe is improperly installed a mix. So what are we doing to verify either through contractors' quality control or owners' quality assurance to make sure that this effort meets, you know, our, our fifteen-day break at fifty-six-hundred PSI? What are we doing to ensure that what we're paying for is actually what we're getting?
So this is very similar concrete mix to what we used at the Litch Lake Treatment Plant. So the engineers have reviewed the mix design, and they agree that it is the proper mix design to try because it's the highest PSI that can be produced with the amount of material here, and we will pour, we are going to pull cylinders. And that'll be a third party, not the party who's installing.
Dave, while the baler is down for this floor work, are we going to rebuild the baler?
We'll be doing the baler rebuild. This will be a major baler rebuild as well as a strapper rebuild. We already have accommodated space in cell one to do loose fill, and we'll be moving our bulldozer down there to compact the loose fill.
One of the things I saw in, in the paperwork, it talks about the notice to proceed will have the date of start, and then there's the completion date. What is the date of start that'll be on there?
We have not had a pre-con with, since, we need to have this awarded before we actually have a conversation with the contractor about when. This, they are excited to do this because we got the paperwork to fill out for the customer service. This is actually a very large nationwide corporation. They just happen to have a subsidiary up in the valley. So I'm not going to give you a date until I actually talk to them because I have no idea what they're planning to moab here. I also have no idea of their, their timing. But we're hoping to do it before freezing weather because we're going to force the garbage trucks to go down the long driveway around cell one and in because they cannot dump. So we're hoping to do it October-November timeframe.
Or do we have something in the contract about freezing conditions and pouring so we don't end up with a slab?
We're on the interior of a building where we-
Doesn't matter, it's not heated on that slab.
I don't believe there's anything in there. I believe that we can provide adequate heat with auxiliary heaters and also the waste oil burner that's in the facility.
Right. But is that the responsibility of the borough or the contractor?
At this point, I, I don't have that answer. I would be lying to you if I told you was, was or wasn't in. I don't believe it is.
The intent to award notice of intent has been given to them. Is there a way to find out a little bit more information by the fifth? Because one of the things that I'm curious about when we have a previous contractor, that normally there's a one-year warranty on work. Is there any warranty on this work?
I believe there's a one-year implied warranty on any work that we do.
Well, please make sure, and I'd like to hear about that next week. So thank you. Anyone else have any further discussion? Okay. Next is resolution number FY twenty-twenty-three dash three-D, amending the Kodiak Island records, Kodiak Island Borough records retention schedule and central filing system to reflect amendments to the data processing series and eliminating the Child Care Assistance Office series. Staff report, Nova.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the Assembly. We're continuing our work with updating our records retention series. Before you now is changing the data processing series into IT. We're updating that title. And also, the series have not been updated, updated for about thirty years now. So it's very timely that we do this. Our new IT director has been corresponding with the archives, state archives staff, and he also reviewed the local government mode, model for retaining the records for IT. He will be present next week to answer any questions that you may have about the IT series because he was the one who recommended these changes. And also, I am proposing that we eliminate the childcare series because that hot office has been closed since two thousand and thirteen, and we have pretty much destroyed all the records. And there were two records actually that were permanent, and we have communicated with the state if they wanted to take over those records. However, they said that what we had were copies, and they had the originals, and they have given us authorization to destroy the permanent records. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Ryan.
Can you or someone shed light on what the Child Care Assistance Office was?
Yes, there was an office here.
Was that the bottom of the stairs?
Yes. It's Marilyn McFarland used to be the staff person for that. They assisted with providing financial assistance, I believe.
Correct.
Like daycare for children. And, and then they closed the office, and I believe it became a regional office, and everyone had to go through the regional office because of cost cutting.
So this isn't like a healthcare, like these aren't medical records?
No, they're not.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinances for introduction. So ordinance number FY twenty-twenty-five dash five, an ordinance of the Assembly of the Kodiak Island Borough zoning, rezoning Kodiak Townsite Block Eight, Lot Three, Kodiak Townsite Block Eight, Lot Four, and Kodiak Townsite Block Eight, Lot Three-A. Common addresses is two-eleven Mill Bay Road, two-fifteen Mill Bay Road, and two-oh-six Keshavera Off Avenue. From R-three multifamily residential district to be business. Staff report. James, have you got a-
Would you like me to step out for this discussion, or do you care?
I don't care. You can stay here. So Scott, have you?
I had a talk with Toby Sullivan, who's the Executive Director of the Maritime Museum, which is presumably the recipient of this change in zoning. And he informed me that the plan was for one of the buildings to house the offices for the Maritime Museum because they're losing their offices down in Dog Bay, and the other two would stay residential. So concerns about not forcing residential housing out is kind of limited. In this case, it's one residential building out of two-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty, according to Alaska Housing. Thank you.
Bo.
Thank you. If anyone else would like to speak, I'm going to take a few minutes, so please, I'm willing to be-
Okay. I'm, I'd like the staff report before we get into that. The other thing that I want to reiterate, this is for introduction, which would then move it forward to a future meeting for a public hearing, which means that the clerk sends out notices to the area again and all that, and we get, take public testimony. Staff report, Amy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Planning and Zoning Commission at its regular meeting on July seventeenth of this year voted six to zero to unanimously recommend approval of case number twenty-four dash zero-one-four to the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly for rezone. Notices were mailed out to forty-six surrounding property owners. One comment in favor of the rezone was submitted prior to the public hearing. At the public hearing, the applicant and representatives of the Maritime Museum spoke in favor of the rezone request, and no one spoke in opposition. The ordinance was submitted to the Assembly on August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. At that time, it did not progress to a public hearing. Mayor Arnt requested that the ordinance be included once more on the agenda for September fifth, and here we are today for packet review. Our community development director, Mr. French, is here if you have questions about the case, and so he's able to fill in any details that you might need.
Thank you, Amy. Bo.
Okay. So this was emailed out to the Assembly. I hope you were able to review the information. Obviously, that's completely up to you if you choose to do so or not. Mr. French, I, through the manager, I will have a couple of questions I'll, I'll need some help with, if you don't mind. Okay, pardon the lengthy commentary here. And in the event folks did not see my email, I do have a problem with how this ordinance was drafted and to include how it appears on the meeting agenda. To me, it, it's incomplete. I won't, I'm not going to strongly suggest, but it does come with an inherent bias towards approval without being completely transparent as far as findings of fact in opposition. Okay, so agenda, this is agenda item fourteen dot C dot Z one, and this is page four of the regular meeting packet, which has all of this information. I encourage everyone to review this independently. So on page four of the packet, lines forty-nine to sixty-two, states findings of fact. And I emphasize the word fact. Section four, by this ordinance, the Borough Assembly adopts the findings of fact in support of their approval of this rezone. I agree with the first finding of fact. It is adjacent to commercial buildings. I visited the site. I do not dispute that. I do dispute and reject the finding of fact number two, that rezoning Townsite Block Eight, Lot Three, I'm going to fast forward here, to more, to residential be business. It should be full stop there. However, it continues, could serve to further the goals of the two thousand and eight comprehensive plan, which calls for the enhancement of the visitor industry's role as significant component of the, of the economy. This is conjecture. This is not fact. This is an important legal distinction, in my opinion. Please see the staff analysis information that was provided in the packet below this to review the conflicting language, which further disproves the findings of fact, which, again, this is, in my opinion, an important distinction, and I suggest the removal of that from the draft ordinance. I cannot support adopting this ordinance based on conjecture. The author of this agenda item omitted the findings of fact in opposition to this ordinance, so please review this following, the following information. From, directly from the staff analysis on pages forty through forty-three, the italicized items have been copied directly from the Kodiak Island Borough staff analysis. Page forty-three, findings of opposition, and these are facts. These are not conjecture, these are facts. Whereas the commission finds, I will fast forward the address, are all listed as urban residential on the borough's current future land use map and not as business, meaning that this rezone is not consistent with the future land use map and the comprehensive plan. This is a fact. Page forty, the future land use map in the two thousand and eight comprehensive plan identifies the parcels in question as well as the neighboring properties as being in an urban residential zone defined as R-one, R-two, and R-three. Definition, or excuse me, Kodiak Island Borough Code, description and intent, and this is the definition of R-three. The R-three multifamily zoning district, fast forward, the intentions of the R-three multifamily residential zoning districts are to A, encourage the construction of one-family, two-family, and multifamily dwellings; B, to prohibit commercial and industrial land uses and any other use of the land which would interfere with the development or continuation of one-family, two-family, or multifamily dwellings in this district. These are facts. These are in code now. Page forty of the staff analysis, this is coming directly from this report. These parcels are primarily used for worker housing. This is also fact. This is what they're currently being used for as intended. Why would we vote to reduce housing capacity when there's clearly a housing crisis in our community? No less than three people in this room use that exact term. We are in the midst of a housing crisis. Page forty-one, please bear with me, I'm getting tired of speaking to you. Page forty-one, this is again coming from staff analysis directly, and I quote, "In theory, after rezoning the parcel, the applicant will be free to develop the property in any manner permitted in a business zone by the Kodiak Island Borough Code. Even if the museum is constructed, there are no mechanisms available that would prevent the parcel from being developed for any other, or another business in the future, even if the Maritime Mu- Museum is established and operated in the manner described by the applicant, which is still a very generous deed. However, staff findings support my suggestion for the removal of the finding of fact from this ordinance. It is conjecture, clearly." And I agree with that statement from staff in the report. Theory is not fact. Theory is theory. Almost done, I promise. To rezone to be business district would be in direct conflict of the two thousand and eight comprehensive plan, which is the same exact document being used to justify this rezone based on conjecture, not fact. Same document cherry-picked to support it based on conjecture, ignoring facts in opposition. I remind my fellow Assembly members, we are beholden to the Kodiak Island Borough Code. I, I read these before, I'm just going to paraphrase. Borough Code submission to Assembly, such recommendations of the commission shall be advisory only and shall not be binding upon the Assembly. Doesn't matter how many people voted on it. We're not bound to that. We can receive the recommendation and make this decision on our own. When an ordinance has been forwarded to the Assembly, the Assembly shall, shall act in accordance with this chapter. Hearing determination, which is what we're coming up against soon. I'm going to skip to this component. From the facts presented, again, this is in code that we are beholden to as members of the Assembly, from the facts presented and by the findings of the report of the commission, it is determined that the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice requires a change of amendment. I don't view this enhancing the public, or being of public necessity or enhancing the general welfare. This is actively removing housing capacity that is currently being used, as quoted in the staff report, for workforce housing. Why on earth would we take this away right now? Despite the discomfort it brings for refusing someone of a generous deed, we cannot ignore the pleas from the community to address the housing shortage and associated skyrocketing home and rental prices. I have some information on home prices. We've all seen it. We know where rentals are going. They're reaching unsustainable levels. I implore you to use reason to think of community needs first, despite the discomfort it may bring. So, Mr. French, thank you. I guess I should have let you stay comfortable for a while while I was on my soapbox there. My question for you, sir, is, all of that said, we do have to rely on your input as the subject matter expert. Is there any reason that the, on the discussion portion of this agenda item, the findings of fact in opposition were not included?
So what we, what we have been doing to the commission where there is some doubt or where there's an issue that could go to opposition or in, potentially in approval, in our staff report, we'll write up findings in support if the, if the commission wishes to make a recommendation to the Assembly in support. We'll also do findings if they choose to make a recommendation or to deny a reasonable request. So we'll have findings in both situations, depending on which way the, the planning commission wants to go in terms of their, their decision on the, on the rezone case. And so that's why there's, there's findings for approval, there's findings for denial in this particular case because, you know, the, there was the, the issue, or there is the issue of the future land use map. On the opposite side, on the approval side, we do have issues of the surrounding zoning, how that impacts, you know, the, any uses on this property. how that impacts, you know, the, any uses on this property. Regarding the, the goal, enhance the visitor industry role that's in the comprehensive plan, actually under that, under implementation actions, we actually have a implementation action that states support efforts to develop a maritime or fisheries museum. So I believe that's where the, the commission was using that goal. Maybe they should have used that particular information step since it's direct to the museum, but they were using, I think, the goal to support their recommendation.
May I follow up?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. French, for that. That makes, the first part of that makes sense to me. However, do you, do you still agree that this rezone, as stated, should be considered a finding of fact? And, and I still, it, to me, this, it's, the, the fact is it's going to be rezoned if, if voted in favor of, it's going to be rezoned to B business. That, the, that's the fact. Now, meeting a goal of the comprehensive plan, regardless of the language included in that, is conjecture. Do you, do you disagree with that?
Well, the comprehensive plan is one of the things that the commission has to look at when they're reviewing a rezoning case. It's actually one of the most important things they have to look at. I mean, the, the future land use map is part of the, of the comprehensive plan, just as the goals and objectives or implementation actions are part of the comprehensive plan. So in terms of their actions, either in, in support or in opposition to a rezone request, they have to look at all of it. So they're going to look at the future land use map. They're also going to look at any particular goals and objectives or policies that are directly related to the request. In this case, they did have a, an implementation action under this particular goal directly related to supporting the development of the Maritime Museum, and that's, and that's what they chose to use. What I will say is, the commission kind of had, this is an issue that they'll, they'll come across a lot. You have a future land use map that's unique to this area and designates these properties under a certain land use designation. On the other side, you have a comprehensive plan that talks about a maritime museum. What the commission had to rely on is the testimony they received at the public hearing to state why this location. It's clearly, it's clear that the comp plan supports a maritime museum being developed. The question for the commission was, why in this location and why should it go against what the future land, land use map says? And so they believed as part of their review of the testimony that was given at that public hearing, that it supported changing the rezone even though it goes against what the future land use map designation states in the comprehensive plan.
A little more, just brief follow-up. Well, it's relative to his answer.
I, I understand, and then I'm going to make a comment.
Sure. So still, I'm still looking for clarification. This is, if this were to be contested, I'm still going back to the language here. I mean, findings of fact, that, a fact, that's a very specific word, and it's specific for a reason, and that's why I keep bringing it up, that the findings of fact, it's, it's not accurate to me. I can't get behind putting or approving this when that's not a fact, it's conjecture. The fact would be that it would be rezoned to business. It's subjective in nature and purely conjecture, assuming that that's what would be the ultimate outcome. We can't guarantee that despite however much testimony we receive. So in your opinion, if this were to be contested and the Borough were to enter litigation, do you think that this second finding of fact is truly a fact? And stop me at any time if I'm overreaching, Madam Manager. If, if this were contested, I don't believe that that would hold up because it's conjecture.
Well, you know, I'm, you know, I'm not the Borough Attorney, so I can't speak towards a, a legal opinion. What I can say about comprehensive plans and being quoted in, in findings of fact is sometimes, a lot of times, goals and objectives are not going to be definitive, they're going to be somewhat open-ended. It's not something that's unusual, it's fairly, it's very common, actually, for comprehensive plans to be quoted directly in findings of facts of, of actions by the commission, especially when they're making their recommendations onto the Assembly. But I can't conjecture whether, if, if this was contested by the, by someone in court, whether it would hold up or not. I will say, you know, we were clear, staff was, to the commission as their review, that this is a rezoning to business. It could be used to some, as something else in the future, and they need to consider that when they're making their review of this case. And my understanding is they, they understood that and they made their, their decision and their recommendation to the Assembly.
Thank you, Mr. French. I encourage everyone to review the information thoroughly, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you, sir.
What I want to state once again, because it's getting way off base as far as I'm concerned, this is an ordinance for introduction. And what it does is give the property owner and supporters a public hearing to be heard by this body. And they earned that right as property owners pay in property taxes. This is introduction. What I'm hearing are arguments that'll come up in the Assembly discussion after we have a public hearing and are discussing it. Thank you. Ryan, then Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first off, I just want to thank Mr. Whiteside for the intensive investigation and time that he put into this, having done similar research on different matters and working full-time and trying to fulfill our obligations on the Assembly. I know what that commitment means to put something like this together, so I appreciate You know, we, we only know the information that's presently available at the time we build a document, and in my line of work, we always call them line, living documents, right? These living documents have to remain agile to change with the landscapes of whatever you're dealing with. In a comprehensive plan, I, I see that as being less of an agile document. I also see the discussion that we're having is almost putting us into a feelings for receiving something of such generosity versus a fact going against a non-living document. And I don't think anyone's opinion is wrong in this scenario. So as we progress this thing forward, honestly, I, I feel this is one of those discussions that's going to just be a hard answer because there isn't a right one. Because you have to weigh in this, your innate instincts for accepting generosity like this with balancing out a non-living, non-agile document that was created a while ago. There isn't a wrong answer here, in my opinion, and we'll just have to, when we talk about this, vote whether we're going to act in a quasi-judicial format with, based off regulations and, and code, or we're going to vote on feelings and any personal insight that we may have. So I would just urge us to reflect as this comes forward on, on how you want to vote with this feelings versus quasi-judicial panel that we have been tasked with before. It's a difficult decision, and I won't fault anybody for voting for or against this. Thank you.
Steve.
It appears to me that we have, are being prepared for two very different votes. One is whether or not to approve this change of zoning. But what we're voting on tonight is whether to bring it before the public so they can comment. My opinion is on almost anything, unless there's a real reason not to. We should bring it before the public. Yes, the public says we need housing, which is this issue, but I think all issues, if we deny the public to vote in, we are tying their hands. We're not being transparent. So I think tonight's vote should, in my opinion, should be pretty obvious. Bring it before the public and let people express their opinions, thoughts, and feelings. Then, at a later date, once they've done that, we vote whether we approve it or not. But I really think we should not deny our constituents that we're supposed to represent the chance to speak, for or against.
And we'll-
And it's not just this one thing that I say that about. In general, that's a very broad thing on any of these things, that we should at least bring it before the public and let them speak. Thank you.
Thank you. We won't vote on it tonight. It'll be next Wednesday, next Thursday, regular meeting on the fifth for introduction. Thank you. Any further discussion on this? Larry.
Well, first off, I want to thank Beau for all the research that he did on that. It was very thoughtful. I just got to take a look at it tonight, and I appreciate that very much. I noticed in the presentation of the Assembly member that when you were reviewing facts, you used a phrase many times, and that was "in my opinion." And, and when you're writing findings of fact, it's not clearly a this or that issue. You have to look at it and decide, is this a fact, is it not? There's room for interpretation. I also believe that it's not as simple as a quasi-judicial versus feeling. Because every time we enter into a quasi-judicial, and the last one time I remember was whether we're going to help a senior who's, you know, that was definitely striking one's feelings. But I believe it's a thoughtful process of evaluating facts, which is what our role is to do, which I believe probably, planning and zoning also did, but it's to look at the overall good. But I will say, that discussion really should go forth when we're actually going to vote on it, and it's not simple. I have no idea how I would vote on the issue. But also, you know, we're looking at issues of economic development, which our community needs and supports. We're looking at the availability of places to do this kind of thing. There's just so many issues that I think were paid and elected to be very thoughtful about. If everything was really this or that, they wouldn't really have an Assembly to review it because it would just be that simple. But it isn't. And I think Beau has provided a lot of information that will provide many of us an opportunity to do some deep thinking. I do want to thank Chris or Mr. French for, and the, Planning and Zoning, for reviewing this and presenting a report and all the work that they've done. So looking forward to the discussion and assuming I'll be here for that, and go from there.
Jared.
Just a couple of short things. I think in regard to the, the point that it's important that we bring it before the public, I do agree, but it's been before the public. This is the third time it's been before the public. We have public comments. It's been, you know, during the commission meetings too, and it'll be before the public for the next month or so. So there, there are currently opportunities, we're not doing anything to restrict, to restrict that conversation with the public. In regards to Scott Smiley's comments at the beginning, if, if there is an intention to use it just for offices, there's no need to change it to, to rezone it as business. It can stay R-three, is that correct? Thank you.
Any further? Seeing none, moving on. Next is, under ordinances for introduction, is ordinance FY two thousand and twenty-five dash seven, amending Kodiak Island Borough Code, section one point one zero point zero three zero, definitions, and section two point two zero point zero eight zero, executive absence to clarify the role, responsibilities, and pay incentives of the administrative official. Staff report, Amy.
I could tell you all about this, but I think Assembly Member Sherrett is driving this one, so I'm going to refer to him.
Okay, with that, Ryan.
Sure. So when we have discussed the administrative official roles and responsibilities, we collectively found out that the pay, and I, I'm going to try my best to sum this up, so please correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Manager. So the pay has historically been a ten percent bump of their base salary all year long to be the designated acting official in the absence of the Borough Manager. We have recently put forth some revisions that indicate how that pay should actually be and the duration. So the, I believe the intent of this ordinance, FY two thousand and twenty-five dash zero seven, is to align with a ten percent bump in pay for the duration of the acting official duties in the absence of the manager and not on a per annum basis. Did I say that correctly?
I think so.
Perfect. Ten percent and-
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any discussion at this time? This is just, once again, introduction to move forward to a public hearing. Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item is manager's comments. Amy.
So fast, just one second. Just wanted to remind the Assembly that on September twelfth is that Kodiak Area Leadership Institute Rule Forum that the mayor and the Assembly have been invited to. I think that there is an email that went out to you guys last week with a registration link. Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to help you if you would like assistance-
Please do.
-registering.
Thank you.
If you do want to attend that. They're very excited to have Assembly members there, so even if you don't make your registration timeline and you still want to attend, please let me know. They said that they would just let me provide a list in the event that there are going to be, a lot of you there will probably put out a notice that there might be four Assembly members there.
I would like to know also if you are going and there's going to be four, because I need to do my own advertising as well. I don't want to rely on others, so that-
Right.
I make sure that you're protected. Thank you.
So please let me know if you're interested in attending to that. It is, it starts at nine-thirty in the morning on September twelfth and goes, we've been invited to stay through lunch, and Senator Stevens and Representative Stutes are scheduled to give a presentation right after lunch, so we're invited to stay through lunch and to listen to their presentation. The city of Kodiak, along with the school district and the Borough, met earlier in August to discuss the joint use agreement that's been out of date since fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. Changes were discussed in the meeting and the agreement has been updated and sent to the superintendent and city manager for review. Once I get information back from them, if we don't have any changes, that'll move forward to the school board, the city council, and to the Assembly for review.
Go ahead, Larry.
Go ahead, Larry.
Just to highlight, what are the major changes in the agreement?
There is just one sentence that has been changed significantly, and that takes the requirement for the school district to be responsible for the annual overhaul out and says that they're just in charge of minor maintenance at the pool. Everything else remains the same. There, in the section right after that one, it says that the, and it has said this the whole time, it says that the Kodiak Island Borough would help when necessary when it comes to major maintenance of the pool. So that would be that WTI agreement that we've had before. So that's the only major change. And through those discussions, we've found out that the city sometimes allows different entities in the community to not have to pay for their water, and so the school district is inquiring about that so that when they have to, I think they said they have five-hundred gallons a day of just evaporation, and then when they have to fill up that pool, they had like a five-thousand-dollar water bill that month. And so we're looking at getting that in kind from the city, so that will be a great help for them.
Continue, Amy.
Thank you. We've talked about banking in the last few meetings. We have added that to our September twelfth work session, and Dora will be here to walk us through those different, we're working on a banking RFP to go out for banking services, and we were going to talk about how the Borough deals with our investments at that meeting. There is a public meeting in Kodiak coming up for the National Marine Fisheries Service. They are going to be here September tenth through twelfth. On the last page of your report is more information about the location and times of those meetings. We actually had an interview for our general accountant position, and that is the only position that we're advertising for right now. So knock on wood, we are almost close to being fully staffed for the first time in a long time. In community development, Parks and Recs met- In community development, Parks and Recs met on August 20th. The committee reviewed a draft Parks and Recs survey. The survey is expected to go live sometime in September. Those Parks and Recs survey and the hazard mitigation survey are all stuff that feeds into the comprehensive plan. Plan 2045 is currently in progress. We are going to be having in-person meetings and virtual meetings for the official kickoff. Those are coming in September and October, and they're going to be at different locations throughout the community. The local emergency planning committee is almost done advertising for volunteer positions. That closes on September 9th, and then we will be having local.
Could I have it hold it down in the back there, please?
We'll be have, we'll be having local emergency planning committee meeting starting soon after. The multi jurisdiction hazard, multi hazard mitigation plan is still open for comments through September 6th. As soon as those comments are done, staff will look at those and incorporate them into the document. We'll submit that. And then we will be, if, when approved, it will, we will be eligible for FEMA grants again, so that's great. In assessing, they are still in Manashka, Bell's Flats, Chinnyack, and Passagak doing fieldwork. We are down to seven applicants to determine by the PFD for the senior citizen and disabled veteran exemptions. We had four exemptions come in this year for personal property tax, or sorry, for property tax. The exemption applications have all been completed. We have one that's in a reconsideration. Our letter due back to them is due by September 16th. And we have one that's in the appeal of the reconsideration period that is over on September 8th. So assessing has been working very hard on getting that information together. In engineering, we have a lot of changes. So AMLGIA, who is our insurance provider, was here. They had a risk manager on site that met with the city and us. We went all over our facilities. We went out to the landfill. More on the landfill in a second, but I think she was kind of shocked that our employees actually run into bears on the job, which is not something she was used to seeing. So that was an interesting thing for a risk manager to see. Dave was able to take her out to Chinnyack and show her the school and tsunami center out in Chinnyack this morning as well, so she got a good tour of the borough. Last week, when the architect was here, we had meetings with stakeholders. We had the H Fab get together, which was great. Mr. Wall will be presenting the final space study analysis to the Assembly. That grant runs out at the end of September, so we'll be seeing that presentation from him sometimes at the end of September. So we can get his travel and his report all inside of that grant window. The Women's Bay Playground installation is tentatively scheduled to begin on September 9th. We anticipate a two-week construction period for that. And under the KFRC bullet, you're going to see four things that all say awaiting feedback from GSA, awaiting feedback from GSA. GSA is currently in a process of consolidating and switching who our point of contact is going to be. So we're hoping when that new contact gets assigned, we'll have a better communication flow with them and be able to get those four items taken care of. At the last meeting, I told you about the apartment sewage lift station grinder pumps going down. We're still having to pump the apartment buildings out to make sure that sanitation is maintained. Those pumps have been ordered and they are on their way. Everyone's very excited for them to get here. And then we installed a Starlink satellite at the KFRC building. KAB gave them an invoice for doing it. They paid it and it went rather smoothly. At the landfill, we have the ADC inspection on September 18th. Staff is focused on the electric fence clearing and repairs. We had a temporary employee out there weed whacking behind the leachate treatment plant where he was approached aggressively by a bear. So we contacted Nate Zavoda with ADF and G to give pointers on how to keep our staff safe and what measures we could use safely, what kind of training they might be able to offer, excuse me, our staff to keep them safe. We already talked about the Baylor building and concrete floor replacement tonight. We also have parts on order for the major rebuild of the strapper, and we have a fall commercial hazardous event scheduled for October 1st and 2nd. Staff is going to reseed the plant and the addition. They're going to reseed. It sounds like we're growing grass out there, but what we're talking about is reseeding the bacteria in the leachate treatment plant for a more robust colony for the process, so we have a cleaner product going out. And we're still waiting the shipping dates for the new pumps for the pre-treatment plant. We are not paying for those, but they had to be built for us, and so no one seems to be rushing when they're paying for it. At the school district, at the Peterson roof, the metal wall coping has been installed. There was a lot of, not a lot, but there was, some of the materials were lost. We figured out what was lost. They have been ordered, and we estimate about a month before those to get here. It does not affect the waterproof nature of the roof, and school is going to be able to start on time with a roof. As a matter of fact, teachers in the building have commented on how loud the water is when it rains because it's so effective swirling down the drains and they're not used to it. So that'll be interesting. I think it'll calm down once the children are in there and all the stuff are in there. It'll be more noisy. Out in Chinnyack today, while they were out there on their trip with the AMLGIA, risk manager took a look at the school, looking to see if it needed, if it could be painted or if it was going to need new siding. It looks like it's in good enough condition for painting, so there'll be a capital project coming soon to paint the Chinnyack school in the spring or summer, depending on weather. We got notice from Brecken Enterprises that they do not want to perform snow removal and ice control in the Bayview service area or Manashka Bay service area starting this winter. So we have about six, seven weeks before we can expect ice in those areas. So staff is preparing specific proposals for those needed services. We're going to have the attorney review them and figure out what the best plan for it is to make sure that those folks have their needs taken care of. Both of the chairs were contacted, and they wrote back and had very complimentary things to say about Brecken and just said that they hope that the new contractor offers as good a service as Brecken did. With the hospital, there is a small fuel oil spill in the boiler room earlier this week. They reported it to ADC spill response. It was determined to not be large enough for concern. They did report it to the wastewater treatment plant with the city of Kodiak. And staff has begun working on our and our list for inclusion as we update the long-term care lease with the hospital. In finance, for those making a full payment for their property taxes, if you missed your August 15th half payment option, your total has to be paid by October 15th to avoid additional penalties and interest. For those making a timely, for those who did make a first half payment, that by August 15th, your second half payment is due by November 15th to avoid additional penalties and interest. Excuse me. Go live date for our property assessment and taxation implementation project is June 25th, 2025. So we're going to try to run parallel systems as we go through the approval of the budget, and then once the budget is approved and we're good to go, we're going to try switching and hope for the best. And in IT, you will have gotten some emails over the last couple of weeks introducing you to Mimecast. When we get an email that are into our system as staff now that it doesn't recognize or it wants to know if you really want it, Mimecast sends you an email and asks you to release it. You'll start seeing that as that comes online for your KAB assembly emails. Mr. Mayor, don't worry about it. And then, and then, once we, is, once you do that, you'll see that it opens another window in your web browser and you just close it and move along. It works really well. The initial kickoff meeting for the cybersecurity audit has been completed, and they have a tentative timeline for the audit to be completed by the end of November. In software, they are going to have a two-hour outage at the leachate treatment plant to update their Rockwell monitoring system out there. So I've been really happy with how IT has been able to work with our remote area, with our remote properties and making sure that their IT needs are met. The GIS NLS is also assisting engineering facilities with their large format scanning. At Bayside, they have five new potential recruits, and as you can imagine, Chief Ellis is jumping up and down in joy because those are great numbers. They're getting them through the paperwork to get in their system. Campus upgrades and maintenance, they have future planning for augmentation of existing footprint. They're looking at expanding the training room and the facilities out there. And last weekend, they had an under, end of summer family picnic, huge success. They had sunny weather. It was great. All three fire departments and the Alaska State Troopers attended and with their families, and so it was a really good event out at Fort Ambercrumby. And then the last two pages of your report are that information on the Marine Fisheries Advisory Committee meetings that'll be here next week. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ryan?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I've got four things. So as we get ready to talk about the banking and our finance director will be here September 12th, I'd be extremely interested in her leading off with her opinions on what should be done. Again, the opinions from somebody who is immersed in this carry a tremendous amount of weight, so rather than guessing at what we're going to try and talk about, I would love to lead in with her opinions, what needs to happen with that. Next, again, we see the old mental health facility keeps getting pushed back. I have turned in a yellow paper and anxiously awaiting that discussion to hit an agenda. I'm hoping that that's a time-driven result. Your update of the Peterson School Roof, I recall that this was a time-sensitive funding project, and I'm hoping that with these delays and missing components, that this does not result in a full payment before the project completion just to meet a time-sensitive funding. Period.
It will not. We have marked it, or I haven't signed it yet, but I've seen the paperwork for a substantial completion. But the final payment will not go out until the work is done.
Perfect. And the last thing I have is, although I'm disheartened to hear that Breckins is no longer going to perform snow and removal service, this does bring up yet again the need to address service district contracts. It's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, service district contracts are loosely contracted at best right now. We're outside of any obligatory period that's listed on a contract, and we're basically at the contractor's whim with service districts. I'm getting a no and a yes, so.
I think that's an accurate description of where we're at. The contractors have had the ability to increase their fees because of inflation and other reasons, and different service districts have handled it in different ways. But the ENF right now is finishing up the RFP for our architectural services, and the very next thing on their list is service districts. And so this has kind of put a fire under it, so I'm excited to see that move to the top of the list.
That's all my question. Thank you.
Jared, and then Larry.
Thank you for that, Ryan, because it was almost exactly one year ago I turned in my yellow paper about service area contracts. A year, almost one count, over a year, over a year now. And just real quick, after the Chinnyack site visit, can we get a little more detailed kind of report? I've heard from people, they're concerned about, you know, the, what, the condition of the school out there, so I'd be interested in what, what you see out there too.
I can absolutely ask Dave what he saw today. He did tell me about the capital project, and it looked like the, it was in good enough condition to be painted, didn't have to replace. He didn't, his concern is he didn't want to put paint on something that should be replaced. So he went and looked at the windows and the seals and the condition of the siding and said if we washed it and painted it, it would give us a few good years. So I know they do have some concern about some of the entrances and the, and the decking coming in because mats were put over it and it kind of led to some rotting. So there's going to have to be some more improvements in the interest and then on the backside when you got to the playground too.
Larry?
With regard to the Peterson roof remodel, and maybe this happens, and maybe it's not a good idea, but I'm wondering during the final walkthrough if they could include the architecture review committee who approved their plans, went through them, and to allow them to take sort of a critical look at the work that's been done. It's been my experience through the years that many times contractors, a lot slips through, and we don't really find out until after the warranty period is done. And I'm not saying they'd find this, but it seems like it would be a good closure and again, provide a critical review by experts in the field that aren't their friends.
So before this is done, the manufacturer representative has to come up and warranty the work. And so I was on the roof with him for his 40% inspection, and he is not their friend. He was like, I will fail you for that, I will fail you for that, I will fail you for that. He took off one of the drain covers and stuck his arm down to his shoulder joint, feeling what was going on was like, this isn't done right. I will take every single drain cover off and feel it when I come back. So I think they have a fairly good inspection process going. I do like the idea if, if people with the architecture review board are interested in the tour, it is very interesting to be up there. Just please stay on the walking area so we can keep the roof as new as possible for as long as possible. I think the, our project manager and our engineering facilities director, especially our project manager, has done an extremely good job making sure that that install was done correctly. To a point where I don't think that they always liked him so much.
This, this isn't meant as a criticism. You're walking around the roof as the borough manager. That's not your training. You know, it's your responsibility. And I sometimes think that local folk, and again, this is through a lot of building experiencing what comes through. I can talk about North Star, if you will, you know, and some of the crazy things that happened there, you know, that were all approved by construction or the high school. And I just think sometimes, you know, the architecture review committee, which are, are strong in their fields, I believe, may have a more critical look at what construction looks like in Kodiak, Alaska. And it might just facilitate saying, oh, you missed something here because they didn't really know what they were looking for here. Just a thought.
I'm not against that idea. I think it would be better placed throughout the process because once it's done, it's done. I mean, we're not going to, I don't think they're going to tear anything up, so that's if the architectural, Ryan's the representative on the architectural review board, so he can lead that charge and see if they're interested.
Ryan?
It's already there by code. So the ARB is by code supposed to conduct those inspections post-completion.
Any other questions of the managers? Next is Cork's comments. Nova?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the Assembly. I, we have sent you emails, and I also sent you a text yesterday. For those of you who haven't brought in their old iPads, you need to do that by tomorrow, and please see Michael in IT to finish setting up your account. I'm going to give you an election update. The voters pamphlet, both in English and the Filipino language, are on our website, and they're also posted on Facebook. And they, the English versions will be, will be mailed to the registered household next week, so expect those in the mail the next few weeks. They're going to be mailed out from Anchorage. I was in Anchorage over the weekend for personal things, and I had the opportunity to meet with our new vendor who is responsible for mailing the ballots to the villages, the distribution of those ballots, the mailing of those ballots is expected to occur within the next two weeks. The ballots for the upcoming election have been received. They're in our office, and we have successfully conducted a pre-test of the ballots. A final testing session of the ballots will take place with the staff of the city of Kodiak clerk's office, and we will configure our machines to election mode on Wednesday next week. We will be conducting election training to the election workers on September 16th and September 17th. The deadline for submitting write-in candidacy remains open and will conclude at 3:00 PM on Tuesday, September 24th. A canvassing team for the borough has been established for the upcoming election. The canvassing activities are set to take, take place on October 9th. The certification of the election will occur on October 17th with newly elected officials assuming their roles on Monday, October 21st. Candidate forms are scheduled on September 9th and 10th. Early voting for the October 1 municipal election will start on Monday, September 16th, and it will close on Monday, September 30th. Absentee voting, or early voting is from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM daily here in the Assembly chambers. Then I gave you some records update. The Assembly item request, they are attached to the report. Upcoming meetings, August 29th work session, September 5 regular meeting. Upcoming meetings, August 29 work session, September 5 regular meeting. Board applications, we have one pending for Solid Waste Advisory Board. And then, Irene and I will be attending training. It's called diligent elevate training. Training includes agenda and boards management, effective meetings and efficiencies, public awareness and engagement, best practices for creating, reviewing, and publishing policies. So, that will be on September 8th through the 11th. The calendar will be presented to you on October 17th. We're processing a couple of renewals, licor license renewals. I'm also still working on a licor license ordinance. A review of the licor licenses has uncovered several licenses that we were not previously made aware of. We have created a comprehensive list, the one that I presented to you earlier, and I'm still collaborating with AMCO to monitor these licenses and I'm going to put together a procedure in the Clerk's Office so we can monitor this and if we're not being noticed, then we can do, we can be the initiator and inquire about these licenses. I'm also working on putting together documents for you about our EPLs, about how that process should go and it's extremely challenging, I think, for the city or the Borough to get those additional 10 licenses because of the restrictions that are in place. I'd be happy to give you more information at, like, future meetings. Thank you.
Any questions of the clerk? Ryan.
Thank you very much. So, on your board applications, I see that we have one pending for the Solid Waste Advisory. I had also submitted an application for an LEPC. Would that be tracked in this board application?
No, that's, that was given to the Community Development Director. I believe there's a different process for that. It's not a mayoral appointment. A separate body will be appointing you.
Great, thank you.
So, you will be hearing from the Community Development Director on that. Thank you.
Any other questions of the clerk? Seeing none, we'll move on to Assembly member comments. We'll start with Ryan.
I think I have said enough tonight. No further comment, thank you.
Thank you. Scott.
I'm adjourned.
Larry.
No comments.
Beau.
No comment, thank you.
Jaren.
Nothing for me.
Steve.
No comments.
James, last word.
Just, if you haven't noticed, that Mill Bay will be having repavement and utilities worked on, so be mindful that that road may be closed at times during certain pieces. I believe it was sent out via email to whoever subscribes to the city's website, information Good discussion. Hopefully, we can keep moving forward and I think that we need to, excuse me, when the architect shows up from Jensen Yorba Wall, we should have the candidates for the Assembly show up to that meeting since it's going to be before the vote, so we won't know if they're elected or not. And I think that they're going to want that information after they take their seat.
Good point.
So, I would like to see them invited to that meeting at, at the very least.
Thank you, James. No mayoral comments at this time. The event calendar, the Cook Inlet Regional Citizens Advisory Council meeting is on September 6th, Friday, not the 5th, as it shows here. September 24th through the 26th is the Southeast Alaska Economic Summit and that's in Ketchikan. December 9th through the 13th is the Annual Local Government Conference. That's in Anchorage, Alaska. And with that, we are adjourned at 7, or, excuse me, 9:27. There was a 7 in there, thank you.